Senator Nicholas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We were having a dialogue on the floor about some of the questions with respect to the RFI and whether or not those participating in the RFI would need to participate in full or be able to participate piecemeal and pick and choose what items they wanted to address. And we had some back and forth on that. I'm not quite sure if it's been fully clarified, but I think that pertains more so to the main motion. My particular concern with respect to the amendment, Mr. Speaker, is just as we add more things onto this list, I really am trying to get a full understanding of what it is that we're trying to achieve. Are we looking to just get general ideas on how to address the greater health care question here on Guam? Or are we looking to target specifically whether or not the idea of privatizing in full or in part the hospital, the Guam Memorial Hospital, is something that we want to pursue? Part of my concern with the overall measure, and I guess I can speak a little bit to it because it is pertinent to the amendment. The amendment here is taking us now into the question of health care with respect to universal health insurance, health insurance for the region, and a health insurance plan for indigent programs. But the bill in and of itself was geared entirely around the question of the Guam Memorial Hospital and its services. It did have a particular line item for health information and research and infrastructure. And so I guess my question at this time for the amendment is, should we perhaps have a public hearing specific to these items and do a separate, even if this RFI process is the appropriate process, do a separate process for these items? Or should we be including them and then transforming this bill, the way we're transforming another piece of legislation on the floor, into something more broadly encompassing on the greater health care question and not just limiting it to the challenges that are being faced at the Guam Memorial Hospital? So I guess I pose that to the mover of the amendment.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I will yield to the question. And that's an excellent question, and primarily because the First Amendment that I'm proffering here is number 10, which is information from the health care summit from basically all of the stakeholders of health care. And many of the discussion basically have centered on the fact that you just can't isolate Guam Memorial Hospital and not take into consideration everything outside of the hospital that impacts our hospital. And we all know that there is a big impact to our hospital as a result of, yes, an agreement that the United States, you know, has with, you know, our neighbors. And we are bearing, of course, the burden of taking care of them. We don't turn them away. So based on an expert has said this, is that if you're going to do whatever it is you need to do that you think you're going to fix the hospital, but you don't consider everything else, exterior extenses or events or activities that will affect the hospital, then you're going to end up going right back to where, you know, you were. So this health care summit is going to bring those individuals in, like I said, the stakeholders. It would bring the insurance companies as well to come in to let us know, is this something that could be done? There's been a conversation for many years, even I remember the last summit that we had here at the time was sponsored by the speaker, Speaker Forbes at the time, who did this, and brought in the insurance companies. And one of the things they talked about is exactly that, MIP and Medicaid. What are we going to do with those? Why don't we insure them? But the reason why they didn't want to go into that was because they didn't have the information. They don't have the data. Now, you yourself, Mr. Speaker, have indicated that we are more sophisticated now, that we actually been collecting data. So we have those, but we don't know what it's like elsewhere and how then the residents there will be coming over and impacting then our health care institutions. So, yes, that's why this is so critical. And it definitely ties in with number eight when you say an assessment of Guam's health care information and research infrastructure. So it's critical. And then, lastly, is that when we do have that, and I want you to know for everyone, is that the chairman has already agreed that we're going to have a health care summit in which we want to bring these individuals in. We want to tie it to the time when a lot of activities are going on here so that they'll come in, not just for PATA and for FestPAC, but actually be here to have this conversation. They all want this. They were here, as a matter of fact, last week. The Lieutenant Governor came in here from Yap with his team of finance people and health directors to actually talk about this issue because they're, they need it, they know it, and they want it. A week before that, a delegation came in from Pon Pe as well for the exact same subject. MYLA, which is the Mariana Islands Legislatures Association, who's going to be hosting the next MYLA meeting with Guam Legislature, guess what the topic of discussion is? Health insurance as well. What is the topic for APIL? It's just going to happen in June 1st to the 4th again? Health education. So you can tell that that is the topic of discussion, not just here in Guam, but throughout Micronesia. And hence, the reason for these four amendments that I'm putting in that affects definitely our hospital. Our hospital's going to be impacted more than anybody else. But by us knowing exactly what is out there and then getting everybody, like, I know, I'm sorry to go into 11 and 12, but by having these kinds of insurance, definitely becomes accessible, affordable, and portable when they come to Guam. So I hope I was able to answer the question.
Senator Nicholas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I very much appreciate the answer, and I very much agree with the intent of the mover of the amendment. You know, I've been watching from afar, but very, very closely, the progression of our greater health care policy. And I've been actually very concerned with what looks like to me to be a very incoherent approach on how we're trying to address the health care needs here on our community. Because, you know, for example, Mr. Speaker, to consider privatizing elements of the hospital while at the same time considering implementing a universal health care system, those two approaches are almost diametrically opposed to each other. To privatize the hospital on one end and to pursue universal health care on the other, it just, it has a very difficult time fitting together. And so with these amendments, what I see is an attempt to try and pull together an overall, big-picture approach on health care, which I think is a great thing to do, almost similar to what we were discussing earlier about a big-picture approach to conservation, marine conservation. We really do need a big-picture approach to addressing our health care challenges. My concern, given the answers to the question, are if we're going to be structuring these amendments into this bill, and if, as the author who spoke the other day clarified, you can, people who are responding can pick and choose what they want to respond to. If nobody responds to the universal health care questions and everybody responds to, oh, yeah, I can privatize, or I can manage the operations of the hospital, does that mean that that by default is going to be the direction that we take because there's no interest in any of these other areas? And so that's why yesterday I was asking, is it all or nothing in terms of the response to this RFI? And maybe instead of going out there and trying to get individual interested parties, whether private or what have you, to chime in and say, this is what I can do and this is what I recommend, perhaps we should be commissioning a greater study. A greater study on how to pull together all of the different policy approaches that we can implement to transform and correct our health care system. Because the mover of the amendment's absolutely right. You know, a huge part of why the hospital continues to struggle is because we do not have the insurance resources that we need for those who are unable to afford it. But if we're going to go through a universal health care approach and we're going to subsidize universal health care for those individuals who can't afford private health insurance, then privatizing the hospital and perhaps layering on top of the operational cost an actual profit margin is going to require the taxpayer to subsidize even more than they would have if we had approached it from a more universal health care policy type of perspective. And so that's why in this whole conversation, Mr. Speaker, as I step back and observe, you know, there's so many different things that we're doing for the hospital, but I have a difficult time understanding how it all ties together. You know, here we want to privatize certain elements of the hospital. We want to now suggest getting feasibility studies for universal health care. And I just don't see how the two fit. And instead of allowing these to be piecemeal addressed, even running the risk of lumping them all together into one bill and only getting respondents interested in one area or another, I think maybe we should come back and reconsider the approach and perhaps commission health care experts to come up with a greater health care policy that incorporates universal health care solutions and that incorporates perhaps outsourcing certain management functions. But to just kind of open it up out there and say, does anybody have any interest? I really think we're doing it in the wrong direction. So I just wanted to raise those concerns with respect to the amendments. I think that they're fine, but if we put them in here and nobody responds to them, does that mean that we're not going to consider it or we're going to only consider what we got answers for? I don't know. But what I have observed in my short time here is once we begin setting things into motion, we kind of tend to stay with that velocity. And so if we put this all in here and we only get responses to privatize only certain elements, then we're just going to proceed with what we got responses for. We're going to get an emergency bill sent down by the governor to do it because we're out of cash, and then all of a sudden, we go from A to Z and we're like, well, what happened to all the letters in between? So I just wanted to raise that point with respect to the amendment, Mr. Speaker. And given that risk, I need to really consider whether supporting it in this bill will be something that would be good to do, or perhaps we should consider doing it separately, or perhaps we should reconsider the entire approach altogether and have it be more of a commissioned study rather than a wide net that we cast out to see who's interested. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. On the Wampat Amendment, number nine, Senator Espaldón.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I appreciate the items that are being proffered in this amendment, only in that I have sat with a good speaker on many meetings concerning the health care of not just on Guam but throughout the region. So when we start talking about universal health care and what the outer islanders are looking to Guam for, and health care is one of them, definitely the consideration is an important part of the health care discussion on Guam. I have many points that I agree with the previous speaker in terms of our approach. But I guess the problem, or the concern that I have, is that within this bill, really, it's a request for information, which first of all, just for the record, it was, I've never heard of a request for information. I've heard of a request for proposal. I've heard for invitation to bids and things like that. So this is kind of a new term for me. It seems to be very apparent what it means. We're asking somebody to give information to us on these nine items plus whatever items are on this amendment. But I guess the problem and the concern that I have is that when you look at the timeline within the scope of this bill, we're talking about 45 days in which information from outside must be garnered or must be submitted on not just the nine items in this bill, but also these extra, these extra areas that the amendment proposes. And when we start talking about information related to an annual health care summit, which is very important, that will gather industry leaders, et cetera, when we talk about feasibility study, we need information on a feasibility study for universal health insurance for FSM and RMI, a feasibility study for universal health insurance for CNMI, Guam, FSM and RMI, a feasibility study for health insurance plan to cover indigent programs, MIP and Medicaid. Forty-five days is a very condensed period of time. And when you start, and again, that's on top of the nine other areas that should be examined at a minimum, that's contained in the bill. And then when you start really taking a look at reality, if this bill passes and it gets signed into law, let's give it two weeks, maybe, you know, there's 10 days for the governor to act, that 45 days is going to encompass a period that includes FestPAC. And we all know, in fact, I heard on the radio yesterday when the governor's liaison to the legislature, former Senator Chris Duñez, comes out and says, well, for the entire of Guam, it's all, all hands on deck right now to address the FestPAC festivities. So within that 45 days, it's a very condensed time to be, to look at these serious and very pertinent subjects, and I'm not sure that it's feasible. I mean, what will we get? You know, will we really get a perspective of policy that we need to or should, as this legislation said, should direct us and what, or should direct us on where we should go, by what the public policy should be? And so, not that I'm against these areas that are being proposed, I'm just questioning the reality of whether it can be done and done well, that it would provide sufficient information to us as policymakers to make a determination of where we're going with not just our hospital, but the health care policy as the previous speaker spoke to in general. So I'm not sure where I stand on this set of amendments. It seems to me that if we do include it, it would be a little more difficult for anybody who provides, who would like to provide information to be even able to address these situations. That's the input I have, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Espaldón. Senator Esposito.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'm certainly fascinated by the discussion and continue to be fascinated by the kinds of discussions we have here in this session hall. It seems to me that when someone tries to move too fast, he's told, you're moving too fast. If someone's moving too slow, they're told you're moving too slow. If someone, if that individual does nothing at all, then the concerns are, nothing is being done. You have a bill that basically is non-binding, it's harmless, it formalizes a structure within the procurement structure to allow GIDEA to just see what kind of information could be gathered and who would respond to that kind of information. Then on top of that, I rise to recognize Speaker Wampat for recognizing some things that she's been doing for many years, and I've had the privilege of joining her over the last several years at these regional meetings where she consistently and continually talks about one Micronesia, not only one Guam, Mr. Speaker and colleagues, but one Micronesia where both Speaker and I and also Senator Espaldón is a member of APIL, where we stress that this idea of migrating to Guam to have health care and public safety protections and the educational requirements for all of our children, it's an arrangement that derived from our compact, their compact agreement with the United States, and because the United States is not paying Guam, we find ourselves in a situation where it's a daily struggle to try to get the United States to make good on the tenants of the compact. And so when the idea that Speaker Wampat proposed to these regional leaders, the idea that maybe we should take some of the monies that they receive from the United States under their compact and purchase health insurance, you know, we thought, Mr. Speaker, that they would, they would not be kind to that idea because under the compact, they're supposed to be able to go to Guam and get health insurance, and we could see how that's exacerbated the situation at the hospital. But these regional leaders and these residents of Micronesia, they understand, and I can confidently say, they understand that because the United States is not reimbursing Guam, their own requirements for health care is being jeopardized. And so they're very, very open to the idea of having regional health insurance that's portable. So when they go to Guam, Hawaii, CNMI, or any state in the, in the United States, that their health insurance will cover, will be covered. They're also open to the idea of spending some of their own monies to conduct feasibility studies for their own region, and I'm happy to rise to congratulate Speaker Wampat for her persistence and her tenacity in making these leaders understand that if you believe that health insurance access to health care while on Guam is a guarantee afforded to you by the United States through that compact, because the United States is not owning up to the tenants of the compact, their own health insurance is jeopardized. And we were in one APIL meeting where the representative of CHUC, because the speaker, through her diligent work, discovered that there's about $10 million that has yet to be spent under the compact that's given to FSM. And so the representative from CHUC didn't want to even consider the $500,000 that the speaker was asking by way of a resolution for them to chip in so they can pay for their feasibility study. And so their response was, you know, you have $10 million unspent. This idea would afford your constituents, your residents, your individuals in your community, health care when they come to Guam or any other part of the United States. And the biggest impact to the island are from his nation-state, and so it didn't take too long for him to stand up and apologize for his initial reaction and to say that he absolutely embraces what the speaker's trying to do. And so this is not something that is just going to happen over the next 45 days. This is something that the speaker has been doing for many, many years. He's even reached out to Margaret Bengzon from the Guam Regional Medical City, who has joined us also in several regional meetings and actually agreed to chip in to provide for the actuarial that the speaker's looking for. In order to do even think about having regional health care and having economies of scale and pooling everybody together, first, there has to be a feasibility study. And in order to begin a feasibility study, you have to see what kind of interests are out there. So Speaker Wampat's amendment is absolutely similar to what Senator Rodriguez is trying to do with his overall bill. And they're, and they kind of just dovetail very nicely because in conjunction with what our Oversight Chair for Health Care has been doing, the work that he's been doing and that we've all been doing is not just going to begin after this bill is signed into law. And I empathize with Oversight Chair over the hospital in wanting to make sure that there's got to be some kind of statutory mandate that's consistent with the procurement law. And, you know, whenever you do requests for information or invitation to bid, we also know that by law, this government is prohibited from entertaining unsolicited proposals. And so when you do an information for bid and you have people who respond to this bid, they are able to come to the table. And then you, at that same time, when, when everybody's there and when those interests are made transparent, then the government, in this case, GIDEA, can interact with these individuals, then whatever is a result of those meetings, Mr. Speaker, they can, they can put an RFP together, and these same individuals who responded the invitation to forbid could certainly be a part of that RFP process, and it's not a conflict of interest. It would be a conflict of interest if the reverse were true, where GIDEA started to entertain unsolicited proposals and then craft an RFP based on those unsolicited proposals. And if those discoveries were made, then those businesses who responded, who were originally brought to the table by an unsolicited proposal process would be deemed ineligible to participate in that particular bid. And so, you know, I just don't want to curse the darkness. I think I see a lot of hope with Bill 277 generally, and I see a lot of hope with what Speaker Wampat is trying to do. And if in the end of 45 days, nobody responds, then maybe do another bill to set another 45 days. But it just doesn't mean you stop here. It doesn't mean you stop dead on your track so we could do a study to take a look at, we all know what the problems of the hospital are facing, and we know that because of their mandate to provide for health care regardless of whether or not an individual can afford it, the self-pay eventually becomes the indigent load. We know what those constraints are with the hospital, and in order to get a handle of it, on it, we need to really see what's out there. You know, and when Senator Rodriguez asked me to co-sponsor the bill, I wanted to make sure that there's nothing in this bill that would bind us to accepting any responses that were given, and certainly that was not his intention at all. So I rise in support of the amendment. I want to commend Speaker Wampat for finding every opportunity and for wanting to make sure that items eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12 are done in conjunction with the other initiatives set forth in the original bill. And so I, it's just requesting for information to see who's out there. It's not, at the end of 45 days, someone's going to produce a feasibility study. And Speaker Wampat is appealing to all of us to get this government on the hook, on the hook for trying to get information related to the annual health care summit, to gather regional leaders, local leaders, and stakeholders. She wants to get this government on the hook to see who can provide a feasibility study for universal regional health insurance plan to include FSM and RMI. This amendment, and Speaker Wampat wants to get this government on the hook to see who's able to do a feasibility study for universal regional health insurance plan to include Guam, CNMI, FSM, and RMI. And finally, Speaker Wampat, through this amendment, wants to get this government on the hook for anyone who could respond to providing a feasibility study for a health insurance plan to cover indigent programs for both MIP and Medicaid. And so if there is a company or anyone that can respond to anyone or all of this, then at least it's a starting point to see what can further be done to explore these possibilities. So I thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to rise and support the amendment, and I just say we congratulate those who are trying to do something and not say that they're either going too fast or too slow or not doing anything at all. Something is being proposed, and I think that we should act on it. Thank you.
Thank you. The only amendment on the floor is the first one.
This one, right?
No, just number nine. Or number eight. We divided it to, just in case there were other issues.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Speaker, for not ruling me out of order, and so my comments will apply for all of those amendments, and I won't speak when we go to the other amendment.
Thank you. Any other senator wish to speak on the amendment? Is there an objection to the amendment? You wish to close? There's no objection here.
Oh, okay then.
Any objection to this first amendment? Second Amendment, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and thank you, my colleagues, for that first amendment. Now, the second, of course, is the feasibility study for universal regional health insurance plan to include FSM and RMI. And I'll tell you why I did it just for that first group of individuals. Because in the years of trying to get some money from the region and other departments and agencies to be able to fund this, I was asked, actually, by OIA to take Guam and CNMI out of this study because he wanted to concentrate just on Micronesia. You'll notice that ROP, which is the Republic of Palau, is not included here primarily because the president felt that they had done their universal insurance, would like to see how this study's going to come out, and he said, and if it's definitely going to be advantageous for them to join, then that's when they would join. So therefore, meaning that it will be more affordable and more accessible and, of course, portable. So those are the three things. Now, what this is going to do, and this is where I wanted to say this earlier, is that this is only a request for information. It's not to say, is there anyone out there now that can do this study within that 45, 60-day timeframe? That's not the case. Because the thing is, is that this is definitely so tied into everything else and from numbers one to nine, because, and as the author said, is that the individuals who are going to be responding to this may only select one item that they're interested in, let's say it's the privatization, then, but you can't just go and privatize and say, all right, everybody else coming to the island, coming to our hospital, we're going to close our doors, you can't come in. There's just absolutely no way, you know, that we can do that, and even we as the people and we as policymakers will never even allow that. So then now maybe there might be somebody else who would say, well, I would like to consider a public-private partnership. But yes, I do know that our hospital's being impacted by, you know, migrants who come in to use our hospital. But so then the question is, is how then am I going to keep myself afloat? How am I going to keep this hospital afloat if I don't consider some other things? Like for those who come are normally the ones who are uninsured. So what do we do with those who are uninsured then? Is that then we consider possibly insuring them? And so they may respond in that way. And so they may respond in that way. The other is, they might say, take number seven, to add that on to nine, 10, 11, and 12, is that then there may be funding out there that's mandated by law, whether to Guam or, of course, to the other sovereign nations. And then how those monies then can be reprogrammed, maybe, to help, in a sense, to address, you know, their residents who are coming over? And vice versa. Because then, take, for example, the fact that we have monies for our children, zero to eight, and they are for specific purposes. But yet, we're going to say, well, how now can we take whatever that dollar amount, federal dollar amount, that we're getting to turn around and now make it so that we would then provide insurance for the zero to eight-year-olds? So what, in essence, this and the other, I know we're separating it, but they really are so tight together. The only separation, like I say, with FSM and RMI, like I said, from Palau because they have their own, and also at the request of OIA, which is so ironic. And that's the reason why I put in number 11, because I agreed to take it out only because we're not going to include in the U.S. territories. But since OIA denied our grant, since Health and Human Services have never responded back whether this is something they want to support, so that takes, basically, federal dollars out to be able to do this feasibility study. So I'm saying to myself, then why would we want to exclude, you know, the largest group, which is Guam? And just think, the economy of scale, when you include Guam, CNMI, and the others, the pool is much greater. And when the pool is greater, and you ask any insurance company, you ask any private company, that if you have a greater number, then definitely it becomes affordable. And just last night, I was talking to one of the health insurance companies, and that's exactly what I was told. So since then, OIA and HHS basically said no, then I've turned to the governors of the different islands, the sovereign nations, and turned to the presidents, and they all wrote letters of support. They definitely liked this to happen. I've requested for compact monies to be reprogrammed. So that, again, is their monies. I spoke to insurance companies, and this is something they're interested in. But the concern there was that if they did, then they're eliminating themselves from participating because it would be a conflict of interest because they've already provided, you know, some input to the study. And then now, the last thing that we have on the table, and just last month, I actually flew to the Philippines to actually speak to the representative on health insurance from the Asian Development Bank, who has an interest in this. And not just an interest in micronisha to be able to do this, but actually to replicate it now for South Pacific. So, you know, we're getting closer. And that's why it's so critical to see then is that is there someone interested, somebody maybe with an economics background and health background, that we could very well may be interested in saying, I want to do this study, instead of going, you know, to Switzerland, which Palau did. So, you know, I can't really separate one of these two. 10 and 11 really go together because we're being impacted by the region. And so I hope that maybe in this particular case, Mr. Speaker, that we just kind of combine those two. But whatever your decision is, I understand.
We agreed at the beginning we would separate them. And hopefully, there'll be no discussion or repeat discussion on 11. Any senator wished to be heard on the Second Amendment, proffered by Speaker Wampat? Any objection to the Second Amendment? Oh. Senator?
I just want to express my concern that at the rate that we're going, we started off with a microscopic look at GMH. And while I understand the discussion about there's, you know, these external forces that come to play on the viability of GMH, I'm afraid that now we're looking at this macroscopic look, and GMH is going to get lost in the dust. And we're going to be, you know, it's just while everybody is off looking to the universal health insurance and all that stuff, we kind of lost sight of what the original objective was, is, you know, we started off with to go out there and ask for information that may kind of point us in the direction of an effective public-private partnership for the operation and management of GMH. And while I understand the, you know, the interrelationship of all these other external factors, I mean, you know, for that matter, the price of tea in China also does affect the viability of, you know, GMH's operation. So I just want to express that concern of how I kind of see this thing developing. Thank you.
Unless I'm mistaken, I don't think it was, there's a specific decision at this point that it's a public-private partnership. I think the RFI was, how do we improve the operation and management and effective management of GMH? So that's the one of the eight that was originally proposed, but there are others. So are there any objection to?
If I may, Mr. Speaker, I mean, you know, in the findings and intent, it makes reference to the public-private partnership. I mean, it makes reference in the findings and intent, well, at least on...
Yes, I've been pushing private-public partnership for years, and so I would love it. But I'm just saying, there's also a full sale, there's different other functions, other things that are there. I don't want to preempt it or to say that this is only one thing, or at least I don't believe that that's what it was. I believe the original author wanted eight different options out there, including privatization of parts, in whole or in part or what. But he's just trying to get improved, efficient, and effective management of the hospital, some ideas on how to be able to do that. And I didn't want it, everybody to think that, though you and I love private-public partnerships, we can't just say that this is the only thing that's being proposed. There's something, other things are being asked...
Well, that's the only thing that's been mentioned or alluded to in the findings and intent. So that's, I've made my point. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you.
Point of information, Mr. Speaker, and just to add on to that, it is in the title of the Act.
And, yes...
It does say relative to directing the Guam Economica for the request of information relative to how an interested contractor, hospital manager, teen, or operator would transition from government operation of the Guam Memorial Hospital to a public-private partnership. That's the title.
Okay. I stand corrected. Senator, any objection to the Second Wampat Amendment? The Third Wampat Amendment? Madam Speaker, you just want to just introduce the... On the Third Wampat Amendment, any objection? On the Last Wampat Amendment, Madam Speaker?
The Last is, of course, another study, so to speak, for the health insurance plan to cover the indigent programs that we have, which is MIP and Medicaid. And many times, you know, I mean, I don't have the exact dollar amount in which the government has appropriated for MIP. And then we all know with Medicaid, there is that matching of like roughly 45 to 55. And the thing is, is that, and I know nobody would know that, but there was a time in when we were in the 24th, I think, Guam Legislature, we realized that there was one patient at that time who nearly exhausted every penny that was appropriated by the government under MIP, one person. And, you know, we were just kind of dismayed and wondering, how then do we get others to participate if all, basically, all that amount of money was going to be absorbed by one individual because of the extent of his illness? And so, of course, the amount continues to increase every year, whatever we have available. But when you stop and think about it, is that, and health insurance companies, in that summit that we had at the time where I spoke to, that was actually held here in the legislature, the insurance companies all came to the table. And at the time, I know the speaker was pushing for that, asking the question, is this something that, you know, you would consider? And as much as they say, yes, they would consider, that it would be better to insure everybody, however, the concern was, is that they have no information. We are, what, 12 years after that, maybe, or more? And we're more sophisticated now. We collect more data now because we are having to report, you know, to Congress to determine exactly what the impact has been. And we also know is that public health would try to get individuals to be qualified first for Medicaid, you know, because we know there is that partial match before we go in and exhaust MIP. So reasonably, when you think then about individuals that are uninsured, that's the third group, is that how do we provide an adequate healthcare to all those individuals? Because, you know, when we say that, you know, number nine, accessible to all the people of Guam, but we also know it's not just to the people of Guam, that then the services are accessible, it's also to others who come to GMH's doorstep. So it's not as if, though, the insurance companies don't want to do this, they think that it's a logical move to do, but surely no company is ever going to go in and venture into something that they don't know about? And that's the reason for then the data to verify then, in fact, that, you know, this is doable. And then the question would, anyone of those companies or any insurance companies who would be willing then, you know, to step up and say, okay, now that I have this information, I can do it. I'm willing to do it and to negotiate with the government. That's the amendment.
Any senator wished to be heard on this amendment? The last one, number four, well, as it's going to be renumbered. We'll take a short break and have the Speaker resume.
The legislature is back in session. I don't have anybody else on the list. Is there anybody who would like to speak on the main motion on Bill 277?
Uh, here.
Okay, so, all right. So on the main motion on Bill 277, okay, I'm going to, I have Senator Sniklis and Senator Tomada.
Tomada.
On the main? Don't worry, I will give you guys that opportunity to speak. So, okay, so I have Senator Sniklis, Senator then Tomada, Senator Espodan, and Senator Frank Blas. Okay, Senator, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I briefly spoke earlier about my concern of the greater healthcare policy approach. And this new initiative that's going to be putting a question out there in a request for information on nine specific items, and I want to just go over each of those nine items. The first is the transfer of the management and operation of the Guam Memorial Hospital in its entirety to either a for-profit or nonprofit entity. The second is to seek information from interested parties on the transfer of limited management and operation of only a specific Guam Memorial Hospital operation or asset. The third is to seek any interested parties and relevant information for public-private collaboration in the operation of the hospital. The fourth is public-private collaboration in renovations to the existing hospital structure or rebuilding a new hospital facility. The reuse of existing hospital facility or property. An assessment of Guam's healthcare industry and market and gaps in overall healthcare services. Information related to the level of available federal and nongovernmental funding mandated by law and how any change in the hospital's operational structure would impact the availability of federal and nongovernmental funding. An assessment of Guam's healthcare information and research infrastructure. And the continued provision of quality hospital services accessible to all the people of Guam. We've also now amended into that, a new area here that Chief proffered. Information related to Annual Healthcare Summit to gather industry leaders, policymakers, regulators, providers, payers, and patient representatives to discuss what it takes to make innovation affordable and medicine safe and accessible. A feasibility study for a universal regional health insurance plan to include the FSM and the RMI. A feasibility study for a universal regional health insurance plan to include Guam, CNMI, FSM, and RMI. And a feasibility study for a health insurance plan to cover indigent programs. We have a lot of things going now into this RFI. And... And the whole RFI, if we look at page five, line one, is supposed to be free. So we're going to ask all these groups to give us all this free information. It says, "Respondents shall be advised, the government of Guam will not pay for any information received or administrative costs incurred in responding to this RFI. All costs experienced or associated with responding to this RFI will be incurred solely at the contributing party's expense. Not responding to this RFI does not preclude participation in any future RFP if any is So we're asking for a lot of really heavy information. Stuff that, uh, will basically create the framework for how we're going to go about considering whether or not we're going to privatize management of the hospital, the entire hospital, limited management, the operations, the assets, or whether or not we're going to be going in the direction of universal healthcare. Now, I really have a question in my mind. Why on earth would you do all this work for free? Why would a respondent for free tell you exactly how they would go about managing and operating the hospital if it were to be privatized? Why would they for free give you their entire roadmap on how they would go about taking over the assets? Why would they for free be the ones to do the feasibility study for even universal healthcare? My concern, Madam Speaker, is that this bill creates, by default, the legalization of an unsolicited bid to be transmitted to this government and for us to thereafter craft an RFP tailored specifically to the information provided by the respondents. Let me give you an example. Let's say somebody came up to me and said, you know, I can paint your house for $2,000. I'll do it with five guys and I'll finish it in three days. And, um, I'll throw in water blasting for free. Now, that's great, but if I'm the government and I turned around and I did an RFP that asked for someone to paint a government building for $2,000 using five guys in three days and to throw in water blasting, I've just structured an RFP specifically tailored for somebody who was providing an unsolicited bid for services. I've structured the RFP process specific to benefit a particular bidder. And so my concern, Madam Speaker, is while this may on the surface look like we're just asking people to provide us information on what they think we should do about the hospital, who's going to do all this work for free and just walk away from it? You're going to do this in the hopes that in the future, an RFP is going to be structured that will fit in with what it is that you're suggesting. Certainly, you're not going to provide your information in the hopes that you're not going to be included in the RFP. But for us to even allow this process to move forward is us basically saying we're greenlighting a future RFP that's going to be structured around the specifications provided by an unsolicited offer. Now, the reason why we don't do that, Madam Speaker, is because the RFP process is supposed to be designed so that we get the best at the lowest cost. Theoretically, I mean, we haven't always done it that way. But that's the way it's supposed to happen. We're supposed to identify what our needs are and go out there and receive unsolicited, I'm sorry, and go out there and receive requests for proposals based on what we have published our needs to be. And our needs should not be tailored around specifically what someone else is saying that they can offer, or what they're saying they can do. So I have a very, very, very big problem with this bill. What we should be doing is a very clear needs assessment. If we want to keep it focused on the hospital, it needs to be focused on the hospital. If we want to do it in the greater healthcare question, do it on the greater healthcare question. But we need to come up with the specific needs that we have to address and then go out and do an RFP for that. In the end, Madam Speaker, if this process moves forward, what I'm concerned with is that we're going to get, uh, an RFI, and we're going to get somebody who's going to say, you know, I can do labor and delivery. I'll fix it all up, but I want to privately manage it. And, um, that's what I want to contribute to, helping out the hospital in a public-private partnership. And then all of a sudden, you know, we're going to get a bill come down here, or someone's going to introduce one and set us on a course to do exactly that. Because the doctors want to fix the labor and delivery ward, and we're slow in moving forward the financing, and this is going to help the babies. But what we've actually done is given away one of the few profit centers in the hospital while we're leaving behind the cost centers for the people of Guam to pick up. This is what happened, Madam Speaker. I wasn't here, but it was an, uh, an educational experience I had of, um, one of our colleagues who informed me about dialysis of a GMH. And before we had all these dialysis centers open up that are making a lot of money, we used to offer it up there at the hospital. And from what I was told, I don't know if it's entirely accurate, but from what I was told was that the hospital discontinued that profit center, and all of a sudden, all these other incredibly lucrative profit centers opened up on the private level and charged exponentially more than what GMH was charging. The hospital lost that profit center to the private sector, but left all the cost centers up there at GMH for the people to absorb. The whole reason why we have autonomous agencies is for them to be able to manage their profit centers and their cost centers to try and mitigate their operational expenses to minimize its impact to the coffers, the people of Guam. But if we go down this route and we begin privatizing away the profit centers of the hospital, we're going to just leave the people of Guam with the cost centers, and we're going to be stuck with the same bills that we have exactly today, and we're not going to have any profit centers offsetting those expenses. You aren't going to get a single RFI response for a loss leader. You're not going to get a single company come in and say, I want to take over the MIP program. You're not. You're not going to get a single company come in and say, I want to take over all the uninsured business. You're not. You're going to get companies come in here and find the, the few areas that we have in the hospital that make money, and they're going to say, we can do that. We'll take it off your hands. We'll throw in this sweetener. But the people of Guam are still going to be left with the cost. And the problems that we have today of an underfunded or unfunded liability in the healthcare that we provide our people is still going to be the, the burden of this This bill does not solve that problem. This bill will exacerbate that problem. It will set it up, it will set it on a course to get worse later. What we need to do, what we need to do for GMH is really sit down and evaluate why the money isn't getting to where it's supposed to. And there's so many different answers. There really are so many different answers. And we need to hold accountable the cause and effect relationships that are causing the harm to the, to the enterprise. The tax credits against the alcohol and tobacco taxes are hurting the enterprise. The tax credits against the GRT that's supposed to proportionally go into the pharmaceutical fund to go to the hospital are hurting the enterprise. Privatizing away the profit centers isn't going to fix that problem. I even remember, I'll never forget, we had a, uh, there was a panel in here, we had the Medicaid administrator down here, and the, a question came up about whether or not they prioritize Medicaid reimbursements to GMH because GMH desperately needs it, or whether they prioritize it to private providers, and she answered, without hesitation, she prioritizes it to private providers. Now, we already know that our Medicaid appropriations aren't enough for the demand. But if all the priorities go into the private providers, it's no wonder GMH is coming up short on the Medicaid side of the money that they need. There's all these different flow of fund issues to GMH when it comes to public money that's causing it to struggle right now. This bill will just exacerbate that struggle by privatizing away the profit centers that are feeding it outside cash. We've all heard from the doctors. They've all made it very clear, the maternity ward, the labor and delivery ward makes money for GMH. It's one of the few places that makes money still for the enterprise. Clearly and easily, somebody will swoop in and say, we want to privatize that. But nobody, nobody will pick up the loss leaders, and it'll be left on the backs of the people of Guam, and we'll be right back here where we, where we started. So I fully support solving the problems of the hospital. I fully support answering the greater healthcare question holistically, if it's universal or whatever, let's look at all these things and let's get the experts in here to give us the advice. But let's not, in the interest of trying to find an immediate fix, just further exacerbate the problem. Because that's what I think this bill is going to do. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Tom Ada.
Uh, thank you, Madam Speaker. I, um, you know, as, as we've gone the past couple of days on this bill, I guess I've been trying to pinpoint just what it is actually are, are the, um, the objectives and whatnot. And I think we can all agree that, at, at least as, uh, as stated in the, um, title of the bill, is that we are really looking to a public-private partnership. Uh, and, and that's kind of the end, end goal of, of all this, this energy that's to be expended. And then, uh, we, we're, we want to basically direct EBITDA to issue a request for interest. And we, it was, it was acknowledged yesterday that we really don't, don't need a law to issue a request for interest. I mean, a request for information. But then is, is really a request for information, the, the precise, um, request that we should be asking for. But if you read further on page three there, um, on, on lines 20 through 22, what we're really asking for is a request for information for the purpose of soliciting and determining public interest. So what we're really requesting for is a request for interest from potential players out there in the private sector, um, with respect to the management and operations of Guam Memorial Hospital. And so I think to be able to really more accurately convey what it is that, that we're asking for, uh, it seems that really what we should be asking for is information, um, on, on, on line 23 there, we, we, there was a sentence there that says, "Information to be solicited shall include at a minimum but not, shall not be limited to," and then it lists all these things down. And I think we should be probably more precise by saying that the information to be solicited shall include but not be limited to recommended policy parameters related to. And so, and, and I, and I, I add the word recommended policy parameters because I think, I really believe that what this bill should convey when it leaves this hall is the, the policies that this legislature will support. One, do we, are we in fact in support of a public-private partnership? Or do we want GMH to be pretty much strictly a, um, a, um, a publicly-run operation, strictly? Uh, so by saying that we want a public-private partnership, um, then that's a policy parameter, I believe. Um, and, and the question that we're asking, what are the recommended policy parameters? I, I think the information that we're asking for is, you prospective investor, what is it that will make you interested to participate in this public-private partnership? And so, um, so then we can take that question and ask, well, would you be interested, what exactly are, would you be interested in, in the management and operation of GMH? Would you be interested in the, taking over the entire operations? Or taking over the, um, uh, in whole or in part? And again, that's, I believe that's another policy call. You know, do we want to have a private, a private entity basically take over that operation of, of GMH and be the one, let him be the one to stand at the front door and say, show me your, uh, insurance card, and if he can't show it, and say, sorry, you can't come in? Or do we want them to, uh, basically tell us, yes, I'll be interested in participating, but I only want to participate in the non-clinical part of the operation? And, and I don't think we've been clear enough in that. In, in, on page four, on, on line three there, uh, it's asking for information about the public-private collaboration in the operation of the hospital. So is it in fact then just the, are we saying here that, you know, we just, um, you know, the, the operation of the pharmacy, the operation of administration, but we'll take care of management? And so was, was the collaboration just in the operation aspect of the hospital? Or do we intend to include also the management? So I, I think that we've got some tightening up to do here. Now, on line 18, um, or line 17 there, we, we also provide further guidelines that the publication of the, uh, request for information shall expressly state that it is being issued solely for the purpose of soliciting public information for planning purposes. So I'm just not sure, is this consistent with the first purpose that was stated on page three, for the purpose of soliciting and determining public interest and the desired public direction? And then we talk about, well, it's just for public planning, uh, for planning purposes. I, I think we need to tighten these things up. Now, I, I, I had a, I had a discussion with the, the sponsor of the bill this morning. And I, I indicated that, you know, I, I signed on to be a co-sponsor of the bill, and, and I will continue to support the bill because I think, in the end, we can both agree on that we, that we probably want the same end result, and that is to ultimately get into a public-private partnership in the operations and management of the hospital. So I think we agree on more things than we, than, than we probably disagree on. Uh, but I do have my concerns with some of the issues that I have raised, uh, and that, and I will continue to maintain, that I think what we should be doing with this bill is establishing what the po, policy parameters are of this legislature with respect to the Guam Memorial Hospital. Notwithstanding, uh, you know, the bill proposes to pursue a public-private partnership using the, um, the, the vehicle that has been outlined here. I would propose it a different way, but if this proposal gets us to the end result of a public-private partnership, then fine. I will go ahead and continue to support the effort because ultimately, a public-private partnership is, I believe, where we need to go. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Senator. Senator Espodan, on the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I agree with the two previous speakers and a lot of the points that they made. Uh, not that I'm against what really I believe the author is trying to get to, but just perhaps the methodology and, uh, and really, I just, I guess because when you read this bill, for some reason, some odd reason, I get an uncomfortable feeling that perhaps, um, this is not as innocuous as it seems to be. But I do have a question before I even go into it. Uh, one is would be, and that would be a question to the author, that would be on page five on line number four. And, uh, towards the end, it starts with a sentence that says, "Not responding to this RFI does not preclude participation in any future RFP." not preclude participation in any future RFP if any is issued." In other words, the way I read that is that if somebody doesn't respond, doesn't mean they can't participate in any future RFP if one is issued. The question I do have, though, is that will responding to the RFI preclude participation in future RFPs? Because again, that was the point that a previous speaker made, that if somebody's going to put in their information and their perspective on what should be done, and how it should be done, and what they can do, are they then precluded? I mean, wouldn't that be almost similar to someone coming in, putting in an unsolicited proposal? And so that's the question. Will responding to the RFI preclude participation in future RFP?
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Thank you to our good colleague. So the question, if, I'll repeat it as I understand it, is that would, if a party responds to this RFI, would that now...
Preclude them from...
Preclude them from...
Participating in the RFP.
No, no. No, it doesn't.
It would seem, though, because, and I appreciate the answer, that's the answer I expected to be said, because it doesn't say that here, right? It just says that if you don't participate, you're not precluded. It doesn't say that if you do participate, that you're not precluded either. And so that's not really clear. He said it orally, but again, whether indeed that will be the case, we'll soon find out, I suppose. There just, like I said, there's something, just going against my gut, and maybe I don't know how to put my finger exactly on the problems that I have, but I'll just go ahead and start. First of all, you know, I've heard of RFPs and invitations to bid and whatnot. This is the first time I've really heard about an invitation, I mean, a request for information. And it seems, like I said, just somebody asking, "We need information on how we might be able to assist the hospital." In this case, we are taking a look at a public-private partnership. There's, make no doubt about it. Because that's what the title reads, that's what the intent reads, and that's the way this bill seems to be set up. Even the report, and in one of the committee reports, they talked about, I think it was GIDEA's letter, any proposals. Again, this is not, if you're issuing a request for information, basically someone's going to say, and we have a list of areas that they should cover, there is no proposal. Because even in this legislation, if you take a look at page five, on line 21, well, it started on line 20, this is the third item, "GIDEA shall adhere to the following schedule, provide a 30-day period after the close of the question period for submissions, for submission and receipt of proposals to the RFI." If this is a request for information, in other words, tell us what you know or what you see, there is no proposal. It's basically information. And so I guess because when you start taking a look at the fine-tuned details of this, it kind of alludes that this is almost a setup for a request for proposal. And so that initial question that I have is that if somebody participates in this RFI, are they precluded from participating in an RFP? And the answer is no. And yet here, we have the words, "receipt of proposals." Even in GIDEA's letter, they talk about proposals. And again, it just doesn't seem right that if we're asking for information, there is no proposal needed. Just wanted to make that. Well, I tell you what, let's just go ahead and perhaps on line five, excuse me, page five, line number 21, maybe delete the words "after submission," delete the words "and receipt of proposals." That's my first amendment, Madam Speaker.
Can you, I'm sorry, repeat that again on line 21?
On page five, line number 21, I'm moving to make the amendment to delete the words "and receipt of proposals."
Receipt of proposals.
Right. And that way, there is no mistake that this is not an RFP or it's not leading up to an RFP. It's more, again, if we're really truly just looking for information of what could be, what are the possibilities out there, there is no proposal needed.
So I'd like for you to read that sentence, though, to make sure that...
So the sentence, actually, you mean, if you start from the very beginning of, "GIDEA shall adhere to the following schedule," number three, "provide a 30-day period after the close of the question period for submissions to the RFI by respondents."
To, so you want to remove "and" then, so submission to the...
For submissions to the RFI.
Okay.
Right, because there was a request, that's the RFI, is a request, so any submission to the requests. And I think grammatically, it's correct.
Okay.
So the motion is to delete "and receipt of proposals."
And receipt of proposals, okay. On that amendment, to delete the words on line 21, page five, the words "and receipt of proposals." So that line will read, "period for submission to the RFI by respondents." No objections? Sorry.
The question, another question I do have for the author, is on the same page five, when we're talking, taking a look at the schedule, on line number 17, page five, item number two, "provide for a 15-day question period." I just want to clarify, are we talking 15 calendar days or 15 business days?
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Yes, Madam Speaker, thank you. You know, I don't know what the, how it's usually done when, in any RFP or any request for proposals or in this type of nature. I don't know if it's business days that it's used or calendar days. If we want to make it clear here what we're asking for, I don't see any problem with that.
So we've got Mr. GIDEA out there, if you want to brief, take a brief recess.
If we may take a brief recess, just so we can find out whether it's going to be business days or calendar days. business days or calendar days.
The legislature's back in session. Senator Spardon, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The question that I asked was basically whether we were talking about 15 calendar days or 15 business days? And the answer, I believe, is 15 business days?
Calendar.
15 cal?
Oh, he corrected, okay, business days then. Okay, so maybe we should write that in then?
Yes. So maybe we should put 15, well, I want to say 15 business days, but maybe the more technical way to approach is 15 days, Saturdays, Sundays, and government Guam holidays accepted. In other words?
No, but they're not, they're not considered as business days or holidays, so we've always seen in legislation, we say calendar days or business days.
Okay. Well, then let's, if I may make that amendment then, that provide for a 15 business day, provide for a 15-day, for 15 business day question period. So insert the word business.
Okay, and that's for page five, line 17?
Page five, line 17. I guess we're talking?
Yes, business days here.
That's true. May I take a short recess, Madam Speaker, just to get this one right?
Okay, recess. Senators, I know we have some amendments that are going to be proffered, so why don't we just recess until 2:00 this afternoon? Okay? So we are recessed.